And we will start the Tuesday, March fifth meeting of the planning commission.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Hoag. Ms. Napralski.
She's not feeling well.
Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
And Mr. Conley is here. We'll have Mr. Moore here this evening as recognition of the planning officials. And the next thing on the agenda is to look at the minutes, minutes, look at the minutes, mixed meeting in minutes together. Look at the minutes of the regular meeting for February sixth, twenty twenty four and see if we can approve those.
Make a motion to approve?
Who had it?
We can rock paper scissors.
We need to discuss. Not hearing anything, all in favor of approving the minutes from the February sixth meeting, please signify with aye.
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 All opposed? The minutes are approved. Tonight's agenda, of course, on page one of your packet. Is there anything that we need to adjust or amend on that before we approve it?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? A quizzical look?
No.
Okay.
Happy.
Oh, he's happy. It's going so smooth.
All in favor of approving the agenda for this evening, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The agenda is approved. Next up, we have public comments. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concern. This is the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the planning commission. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. And I know there's no one in here, but I couldn't tell if there was anyone up there. Okay.
So there was a public comment in your packet that is requested be read aloud at the meeting, so I will do that at this time if you would like me to.
You're free to if you'd like, yeah.
A letter was submitted from Mrs. Kathy Bremer, a city resident. Planning Commission members, when considering the proposed section thirty-two dash six fifty-two relating to the keeping of animals, please think carefully about what that will mean to the peace and quiet in our neighborhoods. Speaking from experience, adding more such animals, speaking mostly of cats and dogs, is a bad idea. I understand that people love their dogs, we've had dogs throughout our lives, but most do not train them, and that failure creates problems for those who live around them. There are at least five dogs bordering our yard and at least nine dogs and a half a block. In the spring, it smells like a barnyard in our backyard. Allowing multiple dogs for each individual is something that would create even more noise and odor, causing unhealthy conditions. We have had the place to place numerous complaints about two neighbors' dogs awakening us at all hours of the night. It took months to get the issue resolved, and it begins again every year. Adding more dogs and cats will just be more disruptive. I've talked with people who live next to dogs that bark continuously, but they are afraid to speak up. I understand that because we suffered a lot of retaliation over our complaints. Cats are allowed to run at will and defecate in our gardens and kill birds. Adding more such animals should not be allowed. Please do not pass section thirty-two dash six fifty-two. Kathy Bremer.
You. Zoom still, still empty? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll close the public comments and move on to conflicts of interest, the next part of communication. Any of that to report before we move on? Hearing none? We'll move on to the scheduled public hearings. We have two of those tonight. The first one is on the animal control ordinance. So I will open the public hearing on the animal control ordinance. Once again, there's no one in the audience here, and I'm assuming still no one on the audience on Zoom. So not hearing any options for public comment. I will close the public hearing on the animal control ordinance and open this up for discussion before we, and we can consider a motion for recommending the approval or not, whichever.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Right now, our animal ordinance does allow four dogs, correct?
Not in zoning, our ordinance, but the number of animals is not proposed to be changed.
Right. So, and I talked to Daryl about this earlier, and having more than four dogs is against our ordinance. And for someone in a residential neighborhood to apply for a kennel is out of the question because it's not allowed. Wanted to make sure that everybody knew that if we pass this.
I was going to ask the same thing because I looked at the zoning ordinance, and I didn't know about the other one and didn't see any mention of any prior limits, but we're saying that there was a limit. There is a limit currently. And then I also looked at the Kent County ordinance that we're seeking to not necessarily match, but to come close enough to so that we could, the whole purpose of this was so that we'd be in compliance with what Kent County wanted, and I didn't see anywhere where Kent County had a limit on number of dogs beyond anything considered overcrowded.
But these pieces are what's left from our original ordinance that the Kent County ordinance does not address. So we need to move these to keep them.
Yeah, what we've proposed here is probably a bit more extensive than what you have currently. Most of the Kent County stuff relates to, you know, animals running at large and things like that. And what's shown here really attempts to address more of the sort of basic routine keeping. Most zoning ordinances, in my experience, they almost all have some section that addresses how many dogs and cats you can have, and then has some basic this is often where a lot of communities also address keeping chickens or whatever. If you're in a more ag community, then it might be or something. So we did propose to expand this a little bit from what you had in the previous draft, just because I think some kind of clarification is helpful in terms of just how it's going to work together. And I will say that the limit in here of not more than six total animals, not more than four dogs, is probably a bit more than we see generally in most other communities. Typical regulation that we see is not more than six dogs or cats in combination. So if you want three dogs or cats, cats and one dog or two dogs and one cat, something that's communities have said, but there's no the reason that means you have to do the same thing, right? You can choose something else that you find is appropriate. Restrictive than that still and have like there are some other communities where they're more generous. On this amendment here, there's a couple of things that I think words are helpful just to clarify, so the subsection two talks about container animals, so what is confusing is with say how many animals you could have, someone says, well, what about a fish? I have a fish or, you know, neon tetras or something, I got thirty of them, does that mean that I'm in violation of the ordinance? And I don't know that that's for us to regulate container animals at all, which would include that's don't have a limitation. We maintain this, this household animals and four dogs and cats, and there's an exception like if your dog has puppies, obviously, we're not gonna show up and arrange you a ticket the next day out. Also, you have, you know, seven. There's limitations there that exempts them up to age of four months, at which point we gotta get rid of them. Then we added a provision to talk about bees, because you have beekeeping standards. So if you want to bring in like have a concern with that for obvious reasons. And then we reference in here in subsection D, that if you want four dogs on your property, you have to seek a license as a kennel. You have in your zoning ordinance right now provisions for kennels that are only permitted in the industrial district only as a special use. And then in those special use standards, there are a lot area limitations that you might have thought earlier, so it's two acres.
Minimum two acres.
For the first four dogs and then another ten thousand square feet per dog, so after it's, you know, like twenty dogs and it's two acres plus another hundred and sixty thousand square feet, which would be the bigger you get, the more land you need pretty quickly. And it must have room for dog runs for training on a property like that, it gives them the adequate space that they can do that. So that's only in an industrial zoning district. Circumstances in here that would permit someone to have dogs for the six total animals, as it's currently written.
So in synopsis, just to clarify based upon what was in the public comment, we are not making it easier for people to have more dogs than what it currently was. If anything, we are restricting and making more clear what those restrictions are.
I think the city will be well served by having, by being able to have the county's animal control, because the city is going, their ordinance, they will enforce it and they will or, I mean, if you don't have their regulations that they want, then you're on your own, and that's just I don't see this as I don't, it's not, if this person is concerned that we're
Thank you.
One more question, what about venomous snakes, scorpions, anything that could really hurt or harm somebody if it got loose? Do we have any provisions for that?
Don't, I mean, I'm not probably educated enough on some of the animal stuff, so we do talk about exotic animals.
I'm thinking of venomous poisonous.
You could get it might be helpful to clarify just to ban venomous animals as well, because I honestly don't know if you can like buy a venomous. Nah, I honestly don't probably answer to that.
Yeah.
By this, this section C and say, you know, wild, exotic or venomous animals.
I think about that.
You might get that construed with some other things, because bees would technically be venomous to some people, right? And so there's, I think there's a fine line there where you have to be very careful with the type of animal. I don't know if we have the knowledge set to make that determination, right? I'd love to see what other people have done to address that. But to me, that falls under container animal, right? I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna be letting a hooded cobra loose around their house, right? I would hope not, but I'm hoping that if it does get loose, it's in their house, not in the yard, no. And to be honest, I don't think they're gonna be doing that well in Michigan anyways unless it's in the summer, right?
Yeah, there aren't many. I mean, like, people keep like tarantulas and stuff as pets which are venomous, but again, if you
Yeah.
if you're getting something like that in a pet store, I don't know the
Yeah.
species or if they're modified somehow so that they're safe, because it seems kind of weird.
Feel like that would probably fall under a container animal to me, and I'm just afraid that we get on a slippery slope where somebody might have something like, again, like bees that are considered venomous, but we have a bee ordinance here, though, yeah, they're allowed.
Some people have had poisoned snakes, so it's
Perfect.
And I guess.
So should I let the new pet store know that exotic animals are not allowed in the city limits?
Venomous.
Like, the definition of exotic is leads a lot to interpretation.
Yes.
And that's, I'm not wild is, is also has some definition issues as well, but
The definition for a wild or exotic animal that we put in here that said any animal that is not typically domesticated and found on farms or in residential homes, which are typically found in the wild through certain wildlife sanctuaries or nature. My mind, if you can buy it at a pet store, it's not exotic.
Yeah.
I say that, like, the new pet store, they do say, like, exotic animals, they're going to have exotic animals, but I'm sure what they're talking about is like maybe chameleons or something like that. So, you know, maybe, but strengthening that, you know, because I don't know.
I mean, we could even modify the definition for a wild or exotic animal to say that it's found in a pet store or offered for sale, any one from keeping exotic animals as pets. So like the animal, their pet store, maybe not keeping them as pets, they're keeping them as products to sell, basically. And modify that definition to say that it's something generally find it a
Is there Michigan State law against certain animals being in? I have no frame of reference, I can imagine though.
Yeah, wildlife.
Detroit had like, back in the days, they have, you couldn't chain alligators to like a stop sign or something, and there was, it was actually an ordinance they had a long time ago, so I just wasn't sure what the law was here.
Line to possess a venomous reptile, you have to pass a facility inspection, engaging inspections and have a permit.
That's for
Any venomous reptile.
But what's that, where's that level?
That would be the USDA.
Okay, well. Federal government's got this covered, right? Yeah.
And that would Buying it from a reputable site, not like online and getting it, you know.
But it sounds like there's a federal law already, or something that already covers that, so I don't even know if we need to handle that, right? It's already been addressed.
Well, I hate to say this, but I did know someone who would fly to South America and come home with a suitcase full of venomous snakes. He did end up in prison.
Somebody from doing something illegal, right? We're just here to make sure we have an ordinance that protects our city, if they're gonna violate federal law. Yeah. Call the FBI, I guess.
There, there are people that do that, it's just something, you know, we might have to have a discussion about in, at some point.
I'm curious if what we have is close enough, or do we need to make minor adjustments to it, or do we need to make major adjustments to it before we can let it go?
I personally feel like we have a good framework here. I feel like we've done some research really quick, just sitting at the table, realizing that we're protected from the things that we're concerned about with other laws, right? I don't think we need to address personally.
I think it's ready to go, yeah.
I agree.
Okay. Well, then, would someone like to make that motion? Make the motion that we recommend to add the new section thirty-two dash six fifty-two entitled Keeping of Animals to Chapter thirty-two, Article, is that four? Division two of the Code of Ordinance to the City of Cedar Springs. That you're, that you're recommending to the city council? Yes, recommending that to the city council.
We're stepping on each other tonight.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a scheduled public hearing for the sign ordinance that we've been discussing, so I will open that hearing now. I don't have the actual number in my agenda to delineate which sign ordinance that is, but certainly we can bring that up here in a moment. That's what you say it is?
Two dash six fifty.
Again, public comment. See no one in the gallery, is there anyone online? Okay. Hearing, no public comment, we'll close the public hearing on, with approval of the new sign ordinance, and we will move to discussing that. What can we, where are we at with that?
So we went through this the last couple of meetings. So what we did with this one is, if you remember, I gave you a fairly messy track changes version of this with all the red text all over it. So we accepted all of those changes. More changes, because I told you I was gonna sort of picket the section about awning signs and all that, because the language and how it was written was a bit confusing. So if you go to page
Twenty-four, I think, of the packet, if that's that's for
There's just a couple of little minor changes that we made under sign regulations for B one, B three, H C. So on that row, awning or canopy sign, we just put a limitation on the size of a sign that would be permitted. And then we eliminated the part about the ground clearance. Why, why we did that is for regulating the sign, which would be the text on the sign, but I want to regulate the awning itself differently, because awnings, but not want to have a sign on it. In a hurry when we say, okay, well, let's look at regulating this awning, but the regulations for awnings only apply when there's an awning that has a sign on it, and then it gets, it gets really messy. So we propose to kind of clean up that row that relates to awning or canopy sign, then down below under subsection three, which is that is an awning or canopy sign over an alley and so on. We will discuss next a different tax amendment that I have, that we're proposing for a different section of the zoning ordinance that will address so that will have the ability to regulate on some, then this will regulate instances of tax or advertising. So those are the only changes that I made there, so you can just see it, just a couple little deletions, and then renumber. On the next page, in the B two district, same thing. Canopy or one sign, just to get, clean up that row, same thing. Sign and real ground clearance, because that's gonna go over to the section where we regulate all types of awnings, regardless of whether or not they have a sign on. Obviously, I mean, if you're comfortable with this, or if you want, we can really quickly take a look at the awning stuff. Otherwise, I think we're, we're, I'm comfortable with what's reported. Simplify it a little bit, not
Questions or concerns? So thrilled to be done with the side ordinance.
A year, I think, on this thing.
Yeah.
It's been a while, yeah.
Someday. At least.
Is fine with this, and this makes her happy, then I am thrilled. So what was the actual ordinance? Three two dash, is it just three two dash six fifty?
Well, that's the start part, I would say the, I would say the sign ordinance is probably the best way.
Format for like the last one.
Oh, yeah.
I think if your, if your motion does reference that recommending the
I'll make a recommendation to recommend the Article seven with sign ordinance to the city council.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been recommended. Item nine on our agenda tonight is site plan reviews, don't seem to have any. Item ten, other business. Item A on that is, is March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, joint planning commission meeting with Soul and Township. Is there anything else we need to?
Sheriff's Department, Office North Campus here for that meeting. We have just a real preliminary agenda put together. We did include in your packet to brush up on between now and then the four twenty-five agreement and some good reading information. I've been cruising this as time allows, and there's a lot in here that I was not aware of, so good information.
Great opportunity to explore fonts from a couple decades ago.
Yeah.
Like the draft.
Yeah, it's, that's, it's not dated or anything.
Okay, I guess the next thing on the agenda then is the master plan update, plan of action.
I got the proposal from Mr. Moore to walk us through a master plan update, basically not a complete rewrite. I met with the mayor and Mayor Protem just to get their thoughts on the optional tasks available there. And they both said the US Mail Community Survey the best way to get the most feedback from the residents. When we did a, when we did a citizen survey in twenty seventeen, I was here a year at that point, we received sixty percent response from the citizens. That's unheard of from a citizen survey. So I told Mr. Moore, expect a lot to come back in the mail, because
Something to work with.
But a couple steps before we get to that, notifying our neighbors, community profile.
So, and we can kind of walk through the process, so the notice to neighbors is a administrative task that we'll handle. The act requires that we send out a letter to townships and county and the region and some other places, just advising them that we're going through this effort. The community profile is basically just us doing a lot of homework and researching demographic information, population growth, housing, employment, things of that nature.
For just a moment, if you're seriously texting scrolling through the four twenty-five thing, that's about a hundred pages long, when you get to a hundred and one, you'll be at what we're going over in a moment.
So the, so the community profile is mostly just us doing a lot of research report that kind of captures the state of the city and all of these topic areas in twenty twenty-four. From after that, when we will do the survey, so I brought with us a couple of samples of what the survey instrument looks like that we put together, if we wanted to do a mail survey. This is the one that we did for a township down in this one is too short, in my opinion. It was something really, really short, and it's only just one page. What we typically do is something like this, where it's a two-page eleven by seventeen. It's folded up twice and they gave it close and mailed it to us. We have a business reply mail account at the office. Um, we have a business reply mail account at the office, so, um, it's, it's pre postage mark, so all, all they have to do is fill it out and throw it in the mail and it'll get back to us. Um, so I can pass these around if you guys want to take a look at kind of how they're set up.
You wouldn't have to stuff envelopes? Oh, my God. That was a lot of envelopes.
So, and, you know, we can go as long or as short as you want, obviously, I think the one in the blue fold is probably a little bit better in terms of length, just because it captures more data and we can ask some more detailed questions and we'll work. One of those meetings will bring a draft survey for you that'll look somewhat like that, and then, um, you know, we can work through and can strike out some questions or add new questions and we can talk about how it all gets put together, um, so then we'll, we can, we'll be, the printing, the mailing, the outgoing mail, the incoming mail comes right back to our office. Play mail account at the post office, they eventually just drop it off and we'll collect them for three or four weeks. Enter them into the computer, then we'll do the analysis and give you. Trends and opinions are, um, that is really what you use along with your inputs, right, policy side of things, so then we'll get into writing the golden objectives, which you have some of those in your current plan. Um, based on all of that and then look at, how to actually put the plan into action is kind of a final step, so. Really long process, it'll be, probably take a year, two year and a half.
Recommend is the survey not to be sent out during the winter, because we have a lot of snowbirds.
We start this, you know, pretty soon, like in April or something, I'd probably think that the survey would go out in summer, you know, July, August, that's, yes, I mean, it's the community profile probably takes some, at least a month or two to get in front of you. Survey will take a month to draft it, get some feedback, then we can either come back a second time maybe with final draft looks like before we get it in the mail. A lot of it just takes time, right, you know, it takes time to print, it takes time for the people to hold it and you gotta wait for the outgoing mail to get to people's houses and then you gotta wait for.
Give them time to fill it out.
Yeah, about a month usually has been enough. Back in the first couple of weeks, but, um, we've never gotten sixty percent responses before, by the way, so, and that would be awesome if we did. Um, and I guess one, one, one question too is if we would send them out to every, every property owner, sometimes we get, we could, we've done like random samples or we've done it for registered voters instead of property owners.
Thank.
You're getting renters in addition to property owners. Property owners, you're getting people who own property, obviously, uh, but they might, they're like further grand rapids or.
My, my, my knee jerk reaction is the people who are living and voting here are the people I want to hear the most from, but.
Agreed. Look at, in that community profile section and kind of look at a breakdown of how many renters you have, I, I think it's um, and so in that case, I think you might be right, I might make property owners, because you might have a lot of property owners who don't property, but it's not their primary residence.
How about people that are like homesteaded? I mean, that's, it'd be their primary resident if their house is, is their homesteaded property.
Don't have to decide that right now.
Yeah.
But, we normally do property owners, but like those two surveys there for those two townships, those are rural townships where ninety-five percent of ninety-eight percent of the properties are owner occupied, so it's kind of.
And renters do have a opinion on, you know, a nice place to live or raise a family, do business, and that's important. Especially when we're putting a hundred and sixty people out there on the corner. Your rentals, yeah.
Units, yeah, yeah.
So, again, either way is fine, um. We can look at how many there are in terms of, you know, budgeting and things like that, but tended to all voters, you're gonna get multiple surveys per household. People living together, people vote and they both get a survey, so, um, you can deduplicate addresses and stuff like that too, so only one goes to each, 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 each household will have to give some files to upset, if the, there's a husband and wife, maybe one of them they don't get to build a survey, I don't know, or, or we can do a random sample, right? Might be a lot more surveys going out if we send them to voters, we might want to take them, but.
We could have some available here and for people to pick off that.
Yeah, we could.
I didn't get one. We got one here.
But I think, I thought it'd be helpful to bring the instrument along so to see what it'll look like.
Favor of like the four page?
Blue one.
Definitely get a whole lot of information.
Yes. Okay, but I feel like the four page is a lot to go through.
Six pages with like four, like open-ended questions and it was very, very long, very lengthy.
That one is interesting.
What the junk card?
Didn't matter anymore, so I just give you one, because I didn't have any left. Well, we know where those are coming from. It's, I'm, I'm serious.
Like somebody had a comment about something in the area, would we know if they're like a neighbor of the concern they have? Or no?
So when we send them out, um, the one thing that, that you don't see on that is that when we send them out, there's an additional, um, one-page front and back, I think a wrapper that goes around the survey itself that has the address on it and then there's like a letter that explains.
Yeah.
What's going on, so, 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 so they'll get this thing in, in, in the mail that looks like this. And they'll take the survey out and there's a letter in here that says, oh, thank you for taking our survey, we want your thoughts by, you know, September first or whatever. Um, and this has their address on it, but we don't know when we get them back, we have no clue where they're coming from. We don't, but do anything on them to identify where they are, these are just numbered on the top. Just so we can keep track of them on the top, so when we're looking at the data later. There's a typo on survey one, we can say, what did they mean, and they go, oh, yeah, they wanted to say. So, we've done a, a bunch of these, this system works pretty well, and typically, you know, we estimated, you know, twenty-five percent response rate, we're pretty happy with. We've gotten thirty to thirty-three percent before, which was pretty crazy. Plus that, that was, that was really, really hot. That'd be great. But, um, I would anticipate more. Work on a, on, on a grant to help offset, uh, some are all of a toss though, this effort. There, there's a MISHDA grant available that we've been successful, uh, with two other communities so far with this, so we're hoping to be.
So to move this forward, if somebody could make a motion to, this is, updating the master plan is really a planning commission thing, not a city council thing, so if that would give me permission to sign anything from Mr. Moore and, you know, begin the process, basically.
Uh, to prepare and adopt a master plan.
So even, even though this is a, you know, an expenditure, things like that, we have the authority to authorize that expenditure?
Twenty-five thousand in the current budget.
No, in the, the one in here says thirty, so the other five would come from the grant?
No, it's a, this is like an eighteen-month to two-year process, so whatever expenses we incur by June thirty will be in this fiscal year. Expenses after will be in next year.
Twenty-five, that's a recent test. That's an annual thing.
It was twenty-five to fifty, when we brought it to council, they said, hmm, let's, let's start with twenty-five, if we need more, we can amend it, but we haven't used any of that yet, so.
And I guess, um, are you asking for us to open it up for investigation, or you're asking for, please, please begin our master plan update?
With the Williams and Works proposed, proposal as a guide.
That motion?
I'll make a motion to use the Williams and Works master plan guide, uh, have us start developing a new master plan or at least updating the existing one.
Thanks. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Let's start a master plan. All right, then, I forgot for a second that I have to continue working here, so, uh, the other business is an ordinance to amend section thirty-two, five thirty-two pertaining to the basis for determining front yard requirements, and I don't know much about this, so. Okay.
Um, it's, it's called basis for determining front yard requirements, because that is the area of the ordinance that we're proposing to amend to include this awning stuff. So if you go down a few more pages in the packets, um, you have this following, or, five thirty-two. So we're gonna modify the title of this, so it's called basis for determining front yard protection, your front yard requirements, common protection. Um, and doing this because one, the section already talks about projections into required yards, which is very typical language that's going for you to say, yeah, you've got a few, but no. That's allowed to project into your front yard setback by a couple of feet. So, we are proposing just to kind of clean up that, that sign stuff we talked about earlier, where we're adding some regulation into um, this section of the ordinance that's on. Following the requirement, so someone has a commercial building, or you can adjust the building, if they want to put awnings on the side of every single window, fine. Doesn't matter to me, if they just want to put it over the front door, that's fine too, right? To me, it doesn't really matter how many they have, so that's why we say without limitation, ask the number. We just have a handful of requirements included, so ten feet would be a required front yard or fifteen feet would are, but not into a required side yard, right, so you can have an awning on, 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 on the side, we don't want it to extend into that side yard setback that's mainly the class of the awning. Um, typically, the awnings are going to be on the front of the building. Primarily going to be something that we want to, actually in the downtown, we're gonna project over the sidewalk. Um, an awning for a non-residential use must maintain a minimum vertical clearance of ten feet above the ground, which is what you currently have in your sign chapter. Um, to be two, they be projecting to the public right of way up to three feet. Ported by and mounted to the building. So, on the, the awnings be mounted to the wall, not have feet sticking out over the sidewalk causing obstruction, so that's why, why we added that language in there. Last one is just if there's signage on it, then it must comply with elements of Article seven, which is what we just recommended. A fairly straightforward change there, and again, it's just more of a housekeeping thing at this point to came up because of the church that asked for an awning a couple of months ago and kind of struggling with what to do and we didn't really want found a way to, 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 to take that work and then this will kind of solve it better. This still has to go for public hearing, so you don't have to take action tonight, but we can put the schedule.
Okay.
Are you okay with this proposal?
Concerns or questions or? Good so far, we'll dig deeper into it when we have a hearing. Um, moving on then to open discussion for issues not on the agenda, correspondence. We have the twenty twenty-four calendar as we usually do. Um, want to point out, of course, that we are not, um, meeting on the first Tuesday, because that's during spring break and we've agreed in the past to not do it on spring break for those people that have, that affects their lives, so we're having it on April ninth. Think it's that way, that's the way traditionally we've done it? On April second, thank, please let me in, there won't be anybody here. Um. Upcoming projects, anything new we need to know on the, on, on those that we keep carrying over?
Oh, nothing from me.
Yeah. And then sorry, I didn't want to stop you if you had more to say.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
And then, um, the Cortland Township master plan update, they're notifying us that they're doing a similar thing?
I haven't reached out to them to see, you know, any comments yet, but, um, I think I mentioned in the past, Solon Township sent us a letter to apologize, it's not on your agenda. Um, they are amending their master plan for just one section from between U S one thirty-one and Algoma Avenue on Seventeen Mile only. So I was emailing with the zoning administrator today from Solon Township asking, what are you proposing there? And, um, he replied, currently there's a moratorium on building homes along that stretch of roadway. Didn't know that. Um, it's at planning commission level, subcommittees are looking at, um, different items there, nothing's final. Um, I asked if this is public information, can I share it with you all tonight, he said yes, but it, but nothing's been decided, this is just information. There are other areas along Seventeen Mile that are also affected by the moratorium at this time. Um, they're considering rezoning that area. Basically, they're making, looking at making that Seventeen Mile between U S one thirty-one and Algoma Avenue.
All the way down to Algoma. Lots happened in the last twenty years, you can imagine what the next twenty years is gonna bring.
Yeah.
Walmart super center.
Thought I would share that with you.
And we'll be meeting with their planning commission here in a few weeks, so we have more opportunity to speak about that if we want to. Um, staff comments then, uh, any comments from the city manager?
Um, been busy, um, I, my finance director and I um, proposed twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget, almost finalized, um, still waiting on a couple estimates, but we're gonna have a budget workshop with City Council on March thirty, March twenty-first, it's a Thursday evening, starting at six o'clock. Uh, Zoom is available if you want, if you don't want to attend in person. Um, quite a few projects that are gonna be starting here shortly, um, today, the Seventeen North Main Street Pocket Park project is out for bid, uh, bids are due back April second. In the bid specs, we want them to start on or around May first, once they start, they have a hundred and twenty days to complete it. So that Pocket Park will be all set before and most, you know, by the end of the summer, so that'll be a good addition downtown. Um, we will be paving, um, seventy-four North Second Street. There was a home there, home was torn down, I have a design for eighty-one thousand dollars to put in a parking lot there. So the D D A and the city are, uh, sharing the cost of that. Um, a large project that we're gonna do is Ash Street from First to Park, it's two blocks, replacing water main, sewer main, and then putting in a new section of road. So that'll be a little inconvenience to the Ash Street residents, but it's my, the in, infrastructure is needed and they'll have a beautiful road when it's done. The trust fund grant for the heart of Cedar Springs, I haven't, we haven't secured the dollars yet, legislature hasn't secured that yet, but it's coming. But by the time we s- get them funding secured and sign letters, we'll probably be bidding that and that'll be a spring of twenty-five project. Um, restroom facility. Um, new, uh, play equipment for the kids. It'll be a nice addition to the heart of Cedar Springs. I've hit most of the high, highlights, so, um, a lot happening, trying to get cost estimates for all those projects and get the budget together and.
Thank you. Um, any comments from, I guess, our acting Um, any comments from, I guess, our acting city clerk? Okay. Uh, planning commission members? Um, well, I, I will comment that I'm, I'm glad that we're at least thinking about moving forward on the master plan. There's a lot of, um, un. Amorphous ideas that people have had over the last five, six years since, since that. It'll be nice to get them all done on paper and get it all decided on and thought up, thought out and more than, and out of people's heads and into something that we can work from. So, um, looking forward, not necessarily to the work, but to getting something at the end. Um, then I guess, uh, city council representative, you've been appointed.
I have. Okay, well, um, I am glad we're starting on the master plan and, um, my understanding is no master plan, no money. So it's pretty important stuff. And I guess, uh, a lot of things to look forward to. The, uh, City Pocket Park. I talked to Darla about actually naming that park. Instead of Pocket Park, we could name it, uh, Downtown City Park or something that really represents our community. So hopefully we will work on that and dedicate it to our city. And, um. I guess that's about it. Looking, looking forward to the summer weather.
Uh, report of the planning consultant, B. Moore?
Uh, also looking forward to working on master plan with, with you all. I think it'll be a, a good process and. On paper.
Looking forward to, we'll be, uh, working with Darla.
Well, in that case. I'm always good with one of those. With that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.